Seven. All the meetings are ordered. I will start with the department head reports. The administrator.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for hanging in until late evening for meetings, but getting a lot solved. To demolish parts of the old Brummer Bank building, the new Amory City Center has begun. The city moved out furniture needed by the city, library and police department from that space. Other furniture and items not moved were sold. The space would be vacant for Mark and Johnson and heirs to perform the work needed. All departments are excited for the move and are looking forward to our relationship, looking forward with Mark and Johnson and heirs. Public director, works director, Jeff Mahoney and myself are working on getting, excuse me, security cameras up and running at the parks. A quote is submitted and work should begin shortly. The cameras will help Police Chief Marsden and his officers observe suspicious activity at the parks. Leadership training through WITC has started on June 2nd, 2021 for all department heads and will run for five weeks ending June 30th, 2021. Training has been quite beneficial and I know several department heads have commented that the training is quite good. I also took training through the League of Wisconsin Municipalities last week. Unfortunately, the city did not receive grant funding through the ADA or, excuse me, EDA for industrial park improvements. Dave Rasmussen of MSA will be giving options to the grant for funding of the project, which will take place next year. Mayor Isaacson, myself, Ben Johnson, John Thompson, Larry Seltzer, Police Chief Marsden, as well as Mark and Johnson are going over low voltage improvements in the city center, the new city center. I'm hopeful to get a quote for the improvements late this week. When those figures are given for me, we will renew or, excuse me, we will review at our July 2nd meeting and also work with Mark and Johnson moving forward. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks.
Please chief Marsden.
Good evening, all. On June 3rd, Officer Pete Farmory responded to a house fire on Maple Street there. And upon arrival, Officer Farmory and two EMS staff members, Ben Nylan and Josh Hoffman, were able to get four individuals out of a basement of the burning house by breaking a basement window there and pulling them out to safety. It was a tremendous job, but well done there, which may have saved lives. The uptake of the damages that have been occurred in our two main parks, our facility, at least in my mind, have society, maybe Jeff has a different opinion on it, but I, we haven't got as many calls ever. We continue to increase the patrol and seek ways to combat combat that and identify suspects. And we've been able to identify suspects. And we'll be talking later about an order instead I was suggesting to Patty trespassing of, on some city property there as well there. A recent permanent patrol vacancy at the Philbouncer Paul Hope was worked on the Amory PD on a part-time basis for about five years along with various other agencies during his 18-year career. Officer Hope brings with him a wealth of knowledge and specialized training, and we're excited to have him on our team on a full-time basis. And we'll welcome his experience and expertise to our department. Officer Anderson there has completed her field training and is on the road there. So that pretty much fills our staff finally. Some of you may have seen our new K-9 squad out. It's a Dodge Durangle there. It's been out for a couple of weeks now. Got a little bit of different graphics there on, but it, but it looks really nice and it, and K-9 Kerchak and Officer Harris are fitting into it well. On another note there, we've, last year we budgeted for new mobile data computers there and then we've been, been having lots of problems in getting them up and running there. For some reason connectivity and not syncing and stuff like that. We continue to work with Connecting Point, acts on our camera system there and along with other people there to try to get them working there with it too. We just don't have them up working with this yet, but we're hoping that that comes shortly. Right now, I wish we had the old computers back, but so I got unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Mahoney.
Good evening, everyone. Well, of course, most of our time has been spent on the Keller project. And then after that, we were helping Patty and everybody move to City Hall. Everything are a little heavy over there, too, I might add. We also had two collapsed sewers, one on Birch Street and the other on Highland. Got those repaired and everything's going good there. Griffin Street lift station got redone now. So now all of our lift stations are submersibles. You know, we had nine different types of lift stations, so everything's kind of the same. So it'll make everything a lot easier. Doing a lot of brushing and cleaning in the parks to try to keep Riley happy. Also had a lot of locates for some reason from Excel. We're getting about 70 a day. So that's keeping the guys pretty busy trying to locate all those. Summer help kids have arrived, so we shouldn't get caught all the morning and parks getting cleaned up. Any question?
No, thank you. Library.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to touch on a few things that the libraries had going on in the last month. The library partnered with Family Resource Center and Mental Health Task Force of Pope County for three-session parent cafe, virtual series for parents and caregivers. They're called participants. The library hosted a third Thursday zipper pouches. There were 60 participants. The library hosted endeavors for virtual storytime on May 18th, and there were 16 attendees. I was able to attend the ALA, which is the American Library Association, Rural Library Virtual Summit on May 25th and May 26th. I've been attending the city leadership training and Patty's correct, it's been very good training, so I appreciate that. Um, myself, Ashley Long and John Thompson attended the city groundbreaking ceremony for the new city center. The library hosted random craft kits for ages two to 11. There were 30 participants. We hosted random craft kits for ages 12 to 18. There were 16 participants. We had 525 curbside appointments for the month of May, 158 browsing appointments for the month of May, 54 computer appointments for the month of May, and we circulated 2,900. Today, we are open Monday through Thursday from 9 to 7, Saturday from 9 to 1. No appointments necessary, but masks are still required. So, any questions?
I, you should, we just had our meeting, our library board meeting last night. We had a really awesome presentation by her two leads with the adult programming and the kids programming, and there's super exciting stuff going on at the library. I know Ashley will agree, sign up for summer reading. There's some really super cool stuff going on. So for the residents out there that are listening to this, go to the website. Go to the library now fairly unrestricted. You still have to wear masks, but there's really exciting things going on at the library. So they did a really nice job with what we got going on this summer.
Yes, we're very excited.
All right. Thank you all for doing everything you do every day to keep the city running. So thank you very much for that. Next up, it looks like we have Dave Rasmussen. Finding us some more money.
Helping some best, invest.
Thank you and good evening. Just wanted to touch base as Patty mentioned, the EDA grant. City was unsuccessful in getting that grant funded, which would have funded half of the industrial park improvements, which are estimated about $2.25 million. So kind of put on my thinking cap a little bit to see how we could work this out to find some alternative funding and come up with a plan to, to fund that, that project, the total amount of the project, not just the, the whole phases of the project will be done. So tip number six is really going to be the workhorse for this project along with the downtown project. And just a little background, the, the tip number six is your downtown tip, which was created in 2004. It's a rehab and conservation tip that has a life of 27 years. You will need to do expenditures in that by May of 2026. So you have time to do projects. That's the last time that you can actually do any projects in that. So the, this tip, because of its, when it was created and because it's a rehab and conservation tip district, it's eligible for two types of extensions. It's eligible for a four-year standard extension and it's also eligible for the three-year tech college extension. And just briefly, the tech college, college extension came in a couple of years ago when the funding for technical colleges came off the tax roll and it's, funding for it is picked up by the state now. When that, when that happened, that reduced the amount of tax increment you were, were getting in your tip district. Because again, with the tip districts, the, the, the taxes on that, on the increased value within the tip district is what creates the tax increment. So that one's, that one's again in the downtown area. Tip number seven is coming into play with this as well. That's tip district out number six, Alton Tower Industrial Park. That was created in 2010 as a mixed-use tip district and has a life of 20 years or until 2030. And so that expenditure period is five years less. So it is going to be expiring in 2025 as far as doing projects. Tip number eight is the River Place in South, in the South Industrial Park that was put into play 2016. That too is mixed-use tip and has a life of 20 years. That tip, tip district will go until that expenditure period is, is June of 2031. So you've got time to do work on that one. That tip district was created primarily to fund the South Industrial Park improvements. That one also qualifies for a three-year extension. And then most recently, the, the downtown tip or tip number nine was put into play in 2019. And that pretty much overlays the, all of tip number six, okay? So that's in your downtown and that too is a rehab and conservation tip. That too has a life of 27 years or until September of 2046. We'll all be here still at that time. Expenditure period on that ends in 2041. And again, that pretty much overlaid all of tip number six. It included some additional properties. So I'm only bringing these up because they're all kind of related into this financing plan for the South Industrial Park improvements. So what has to happen in order for those improvements to be covered by tip district? Again, tip number six is going to be the workhorse. That's the, that's the tip district that's creating, you know, a lot of increment at this point in time. It's going to be used to fund, as Mayor said in the, in the meeting downtown that, you know, that's going to pay the debt service on the state drinking water and clean water fund loans that we're going to be obtaining. In fact, we're closing on those loans June 23rd, I believe it is. That interest rate is a point eight, nine, one interest rate. So looking at that, we, we said, how can we maximize that tip number six? Like I said, that's going to be the workhorse. So a couple of things are going to have to happen. One, we're going to have to do a territory amendment. Okay? We want to do a territory amendment to extend the, the boundary of tip number one, which base, or tip number six, which basically is at Broadway. That's the southern boundary of tip number six. We want to extend that, put enough area into that tip district to be within one-half mile of those South Industrial Park improvements. In 2000, before this tip was, or after this tip was created in 2004, did I say? Yeah. There went into law, a law was an inactive, we call it two, or Act 57, that allowed for tip districts to make expenditures outside of their boundaries, within one-half mile of their boundaries. So what our thought was to amend that tip district to get it down south enough to be within one-half mile of the, the South Industrial Park projects. That way, tip number six can pay for those projects in that South Industrial Park. Tip number eight will still contribute to those South Industrial Park projects. What we're looking at in those projections that we put together is not only will tip number six pay for the Keller Avenue project and the debt service on that, but it will pay $2 million. I mean, and these are projections, keep in mind. It'll pay $2 million of the South Industrial Park project. I always want to say South Lake because that's the street I live in. So that's one thing that has to happen with tip number six. The other thing that would happen is that we, we'd extend that area. We allow in that, we add territory. We would amend the project plan to do projects within a half mile and identify these projects. And then also we would look at the extension of the tip district for, tip number six for seven years. That spreads out that debt service for both the downtown project, which again is less than 1% interest. And plus it'll allow more time to pay for those industrial park projects. So that's the, that's the first thing that we do have to do. The second thing is that because we're taking some of that increment away from tip number six, we won't be able to pay for all of those projects unless we do a allocation amendment from tip number seven. Okay, tip number seven is that mixed-use tip district down in South Industrial Park. It does not have any debt and it's creating increment. And at the end of 2020, tip number seven had about 118,000 in it. And again, it's creating about $51,000 a year in tax increment. So my thought was to do an allocation amendment because tip number six is a rehab and that rehab and conservation tip district. Any other tip district can donate to that excess increment. So again, we don't have any costs in, you know, to any debts or any costs and tip number seven really don't expect anymore. So we can allocate the tax increment from number seven to number six. Did I lose you yet? So that would be one of the things, and that would make up for some of that tax increment of six that would be paying for those South Industrial Park improvements. So the, the spreadsheet that I put together, basically again, it's, it's projections. We would be able to have tip number six pay for $2 million of the improvements at the South Industrial Park in addition to the Keller Avenue project. We also have tip number nine, the new tip, that's the downtown area. They would also contribute to that Keller Avenue project. And that, that one is creating about 31,000 a year. So that's doing pretty well. That's expected to go up because Brummer Bank, that new building is not, on, not producing the tax increment yet. It's not on the value or on the tax rule at this point in time. So the value of tax increment number nine, because that'll go at nine, that will increase that tax increment. So there's more tax increment that coming from nine that would help pay for the Keller Avenue project. And then we have the contribution from tip number seven if we do that allocation amendment. So based on that, with the territory amendment, the ability to do projects within a half mile, the extension of tip number seven for, or tip number six for seven years. If you look at this, the projections show that that would cash flow at the end of the tip district, which would be basically 2039. And again, you know, it might not go that long because again, you're having tip number nine pay for some of those Keller Avenue projects. Plus as tip number eight, if you have that industrial park developed, hopefully you'll get businesses in there. And tip number eight will be able to contribute to those industrial park improvements.
If we're expanding the boundaries of six, does it make sense to expand it enough to also include the airport?
That, that's, that can be looked at. Yeah. My, my thought was to get within a half mile, but we can also look at, you know, putting some of that airport property. And the thought of getting down to within the half mile would be to come around like a harem and go out to the golf course and, and take the golf course in. And put that in tip number six. That puts you, the southern boundary of the golf course puts you within a half mile of that. But we can also look at that too.
It also puts you in the half mile of the airport, doesn't it?
Pardon?
That should also put you within a half.
Right, right. But I think, you know, if there's areas on the airport property that might be developed, that would be paying taxes, you might want to include that in.
Sure.
You might want to probably include that in number eight. Because, you know, tip number six has a life, if you're extending it to 2038, whereas tip number eight, basically with an extension goes to 2040. So, and again, you might, tip number six might close earlier than 2038 just from the fact that nine and eight are going to hopefully develop more and create more increments. So it's less of a burden on number six.
So nine overlaps six?
Yep.
And, but six won't overlap eight?
Six will not overlap eight. And, you know, I've been working with tip districts for 35 years. I said, this sounds like it would work, but I ran it past the Department of Revenue just to make sure I wasn't missing anything. And they said, yeah, that works. You can do that. So started to tell myself in my old age.
The first time ever, they probably said yes.
Said, yes, did you check it again?
Well, I kind of told them, you know, this, this is what I'm thinking and, you know, is this doable? And they said, yeah. Yeah. I mean, again, you, you have to do, do some steps. The other thing too is that the joint review board, when you do an amendment to a tip district, they have to approve it as well. And the joint review board being city, tech college, school district and the county. But you don't know unless you try.
Question for Paul. Is that the, is the affordable housing for the dog park area, is that dead in the water?
As of now, it is. Yes. I think the price of materials are just outlined.
So that, that's in, that's in tip seven, right?
Correct.
Tip seven.
That's stellar. Yeah.
And that's really, that's really the only piece of land that we have available in tip seven for any further development, I think, isn't it?
As of today, yes.
Okay.
Seven. Again, that was created in September 2010. And kind of what we, when we, when we create a project plan, anytime now, we always put that half-mile buffer area in there. Because again, that came into play about 2006, 2007. So we just automatically put it in there. So tip number seven can also pay for improvements within a half mile of the, so.
Any further questions for Dave? So I imagine this will come up at the council meeting to decide whether we move forward or not.
Is there a rush on getting this done?
There isn't, I guess. You know, with, with these amendments, they can be done at any time, basically. But again, I get, I just wanted to present that information to know, show you that there's a way around this, you know, again, to try to fund those industrial park improvements without, you know.
I'd just like to take a couple of weeks and process all this. It seems, it is very complex, no doubt about it. Seems doable, but just need some time to.
Sure. No, that, that's very.
Let it marinate for a while.
Probably the most creative I've gotten with. That's why I didn't want to check, make sure I'm not.
You didn't seem very confident yourself.
Well, that's why I checked with the department around. I just hope that there was something that I'm not missing, so.
Okay, good. All right. Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to number three, ordinance 11, 2021 trespass. I think Tom alluded to it a little bit as to the rationale.
Oh, sure. As I alluded to, we, you know, over the past couple of meetings there, we've had some incidents in our parks there. We've identified some people that we'd rather not have hang around our parks there. And I, over the years, we've kind of did some, you can't be on property for a while and stuff like this, but I wanted to come up with an order that maybe that would spell out a lot more stuff on there. So if we do run into more of these people that have either caused been mischievous or caused damage and stuff like that, that we have a more firm avenue there to say, sorry, your presence given wanted on this property for X amount of days and things like that. So it's like provided Patty and Ben a couple of copies that I've got from other areas there and they put one together here I think would fit our needs there, so.
In section C, is there any concern about, I mean, I would read this that if they have that order, they're not allowed to even come into City Hall during office hours?
It would be specific to the area there. I believe that down in D there would be identifying the property is prohibited from entering there. It would be specific to, to say our, mainly I'd be looking at our park system there, our, our park area where we had seen the the majority of the problems there, so.
Maybe want to by default include the sewer plant then too, right?
Also leaves them in appeal process as well there, so.
Make a motion to forward ordinance 11 dash 2021 to City Council for review and approval.
Okay, do we have a second? On any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to move forward. Security cameras for city parks. I think you talked about that you've started this, this Jeff or.
We actually, we actually can't contact, contact in capital. And they looked at, you know, Jeff kind of brought them over there and we looked at all the parks. You've got the North Park, you've got the.
Beach.
Beach, yep.
And then the.
And each project's about 2,300, so it's still a short of $7,000.
Okay. Do we have one?
I would make a motion to approve that and forward it to City Council. I think we're, we, it don't take long to get $7,000 worth of damage in our parks and especially when we got a brand-new restroom facility in North Park. It's already been subject to some of that.
I will second it with a question. Where do we have 7,000 dollars to pay for?
That's a good question. We do.
Thank you. Do you have a good answer?
And I have looked at that and there's several thousand dollars in the park budget. I don't believe that we've even spent ten yet.
We do have our, I'd rather tell you, we do have the booth thing going on 28, I think, a little riled up.
Is that our year to pay for that or is that?
It's our year. Yeah, yes. Yeah, yes.
So there's money in part improvement.
Um, and you were asking Paul about wifi. There's wifi in all those areas.
Correct. That's what I was gonna ask.
The beach has no wifi.
Beach doesn't have wifi.
Beach doesn't have wifi. Um, the park, the North Park does. And the pavilion does not. We just got wifi in there, so.
Oh, they did finally get it hooked up?
They did it last week. So, yeah, so the only place is the beach.
Okay, thank you.
So we could look at other options.
I think the beach would give by just some personal camera, couldn't we? So we have a sea shop.
Well. You can get a T-Mobile air card for like twenty bucks a month. They're very inexpensive. And actually, that's what most municipalities are going to for like their SCADA and stuff like that. Just those little air cards, cause they're so inexpensive. Cheaper than running wifi or running internet to a facility.
Verizon has one for twenty bucks also.
Name your vendor, I guess.
Okay, so there's been a, a motion with a second with clarification. Did you get your clarification answered?
I did. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hey.
All right, motion carries to move forward to city council. Last is low voltage wiring or not, second to last, I guess, low voltage wiring for the city center project.
Okay, um, we've been in contact with Capcom. And they are looking at, um, they were recommended by Mark and Johnson. And we do not have to go through the vet process because we're the owner of the, of that portion of the project. So what he's doing is he's putting together a plan for the library, police, city hall, council chambers. To camera that area, security cameras for the building, panic buttons. What else? What else are missing?
Ether.
Entry access.
Entry access, yeah, access to all the corridors. He doesn't have a, a price yet, but we can value estimate that down, just like we did with our. Heirs, you know, we can go look at the project, what everything costs and we will have Mark and Johnson work with us on that to make sure that we're getting a fair price. And it's a competitive price to what's being done out there. So. We don't have to make all those decisions. They can help us with that. So whatever we get, we can get, send it to them and then we can whittle it down if we need to, to. What is going to work for us.
And I did ask him, with all the bells and whistles, how much would it cost? I said fifty, hundred and fifty.
No.
He said about three hundred thousand. So we might have to do some value. Engineering.
Well, if they can put it into categories, the way that we did, that said, this is a nice to have, this is a must have and that some of the things in the middle. You can make some value judgments based on those things or can it be phased? You know, is there something you can add?
Well, we, we need to get the wires in the wall.
Yeah, put the wires in the wall. We'll hook something up to it next year. Can do those six too. Yep.
So anyway, that's where we're at and you'll all be included in all the discussions and. I've got, that's why we have a construction manager because he helps us. Make sure we're being, being treated fairly and we're getting the best bang for our buck, so. That's all I have and I should have confirmation of that at the end of this week. And then we can just bring it to our, for our next meeting. February, the July meeting, we can just start talking and.
Good. Any further discussion on number five?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I ask a question before? Um, how frequently are we gonna have status updates on the city center building progress?
Every week.
Okay.
What ends up happening is Paul and I are contacts for that. And Braxton has sent us an email and we're part of a, a contact for our calendars. They meet every Wednesday at nine o'clock. And then we get a status update at the end of the week from Tim, who's the project overseeing supervisor.
Yep.
And then he actually sends us an email with pictures. So I will forward all that time to you folks. So you have all those.
I stopped on there today. It's quite uh. There's a lot of stuff missing inside, put it that way. It's. Yeah, uh, pretty interesting. I think it would be helpful with those weekly updates that we figure out how we let the community know the status of those as well.
Yeah.
I think the daily Keller projects have been.
I've been trying to add that, but I haven't, I've forgotten to go over there and talk to Tim. Tim's gonna expect me in the morning. So then I go over there to WPCA. And then I talk with Debbie to do the uh, email and the uh. Facebook update, so.
So we're trying to keep those.
We'll continue that.
Yeah, but um, yeah, just be, just let, let it be known that this month I can't attend those because I'm in leadership training on those Wednesdays, but then I'm gonna start going with Paul.
Even if you were to put them in the one drive versus sending us all an email and just tell us that it's there. Thank you.
Okay, motion adjourned.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.